The time is now 7:01. I'm going to reconvene to open session September 5th, 2017, regular board meeting. Jackie, can you call the roll, please?
Ms. Demming?
Here.
Ms. Price?
Here.
Mr. Rising?
Here.
Ms. Donahue?
Here.
Ms. Peel?
Here.
Mr. Carrubus?
Here.
Mr. Resack?
Here. Lori, could you lead us in a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You have to be more specific.
No, we just want to be more specific which Lori you want to lead.
Oh, there you go. Sorry.
That's okay.
We are now moving to board salutes. We have one, and I'm going to ask Susan to do that.
Matia Valley math teacher named finalist for Presidential Award. The board salutes Matia Valley math teacher Natalie Johnson, who was recently named one of five finalists in Illinois for the Presidential Award for Excellence in Mathematics and Science Teaching. The award is the nation's highest honor for teachers of math and science, including computer science. Awardees serve as models for their colleagues, inspiration for their communities, and leaders in the improvement of math and science education. Congratulations, Natalie.
There you go. And now, one of my favorite parts. Each board meeting beginning in September, we have a student representative report from one of our high schools. Today, Alexa Jordan from Matia Valley High School. Is she here? Come on up. She will provide us with a report. Welcome.
Hi. Well, good evening, everyone, and happy Labor Day. My name is Alexa Jordan, and I'm the class of 2018 Executive Board Representative for MB Student Government. The Mustangs have had an eventful summer, and the 2017-2018 year is off to a great start. So first, the student government. This year marked a successful start to Matia's Readiness Days, August 14 through 17. With staff and student government Executive Board volunteers assisting, students picked up Chromebooks, took ID photos, and completed registration. Last Friday night, the USA-themed "We Are One" football game against Naperville North was played in honor of the victims of Hurricane Harvey. The entire night was dedicated in supporting the victims. Student government, football, band, and cheer all came together to collect over 1,100 in donations from students and community members for the Hurricane Harvey Relief Fund, the J.J. Watt Foundation. On August 12, Matia Valley hosted a Unity Partnership NFP Backyard Party with DuPage Law Enforcement. Principal Advisory Board and the Student Government Executive Board assisted in running the event. This event featured local businesses, cultural and religious groups, and county officials. Next is athletics. Matia hosts its annual Mustang Mania in August as fans, athletes, and staff members sported their black and gold gear and watched as fall sports compete in preview of the upcoming athletic season. The night featured a multitude of sports, scrimmages, fun games, and lots of school spirit. The athletic department has had some new and exciting developments this year. A captain's council was started this year to go along with our student athletic leadership team, SOL, to establish our athletic department core values moving forward. Also, we've been able to integrate some new technology at Matia Valley with live streaming cameras, new digital score tables, and streaming music with game-specific announcements. Boy soccer. Boy soccer is starting off their season very strong. varsity boys' season opener was a 3-2 win against Jacobs. JV1, JV2, and Frost teams also started the season strong with wins over Jacobs, West Aurora, and in the Second War Tournament. Girls swimming and diving, and girls volleyball are also off to phenomenal starts. More updates will come as the season progresses. The music department is excited to announce that over 900 students have enrolled in the music courses at Matia Valley for the 2017-2018 school year. In addition, Apollo and Muses, our a cappella groups, have been giving back to their community this summer. Both groups sang at the Kids Matter fundraiser at Luminaldi's in Naperville and at the MLK Back-to-School Festival in Aurora this summer. Marching band is off to a great start. They performed in the Naperville Labor Day Parade at the U of I Band Day this past weekend. The theater program will be presenting Little Shop of Horrors as a fall musical this November, 2nd, 3rd, and 4th, so good for tickets. Some other significant developments over the summer include: English teacher Christian DiGiorgio and 42 Matia Valley students visited six cities while in Italy this summer, learning about the culture and the history. Additionally, Mrs. Thomas and selected student volunteers helped run the bridge program at Matia Valley. And finally, our school's theme for the year is "Everything Matters," where we have all taken on the commitment to pursue timeliness, engagement, and integrity. We're excited for this school year. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, Alexa.
We are now moving on to our next agenda item, and it is now time for public comment for non-agenda items. If you are here to speak to an agenda item, that comment will be taken immediately prior to that item. Thirty minutes is allowed for public comment, and each person is limited to three minutes. When addressing the board, we ask that you respect the confidentiality and safety of our students and school district personnel. We also ask that those addressing the board be cognizant that it is an open meeting and is available to all age groups, and as such, ask that you consider who the audience members are this evening and keep comments age-appropriate. Public comment represents the voice and opinion of the speaker. There will be no feedback from the board members during the meeting, but follow-up will be provided by an administrator as appropriate. And I'm going to begin with Michelle Nonnaman.
My name is Michelle Nonnaman. I was here last year, and I am a volunteer with Dyslexia Action Group of Naperville, sometimes known as DAGN, and I'm also a mom of a dyslexic 7th grader at Skelland. So tonight, I just wanted to do two things. With three minutes, I feel like I really need to speed-talk, but we have several events coming up this fall. October, obviously, is Awareness Month for a lot of significant issues, but one of them is also dyslexia, so I feel like we kind of get like a backseat of, oh, it's the Awareness Month for dyslexia. So anyway, we do have three upcoming events, and I invite anybody attending tonight to join us. You can always register or check us out at D-A-G-Naperville.com. And we have two events coming up from private schools that are sharing their thoughts and tips on how they are tackling dyslexia and helping their kids succeed. And then we also have a simulation, which we held last year, that I believe a few people attended, and that is really eye-opening to just give you a glimpse as to what students really go through in a day and how much they have to concentrate from the moment they get there to the end of the day to really get through all of the coursework, et cetera. So the simulation, all of these events are free. As always, we provide them for our community. And so just a couple of things for awareness. You know, there's different statistics out there because a lot of people go undiagnosed, but it's pretty widely accepted that 10% to 20% of our population is dyslexic. So everyone here in this room should probably know somebody, whether it's readily diagnosed or not, so we just want you to be aware of a few things in regards to that. It's learning difficulty is characterized by trouble decoding or sounding out words, so jolly phonics does not work for these children. Struggle with word recognition and poor spelling. Significant difficulty with fluency, comprehension, rapid naming, vocabulary, and written language. High risk for falling behind peers and academics. And the kicker is it's associated with average or above-average IQ. So a lot of times, these children do not present. They go under the radar because they're smart, and they've figured out workarounds until it gets too hard, where there's words and more homework and tons of topics that they're just not familiar with, where they can't fudge it anymore. Dyslexia is not a vision problem. It's not a problem of seeing letters or words backwards, and dyslexia cannot be cured. But there is hope for us, and we're hoping that the school board will continue to provide training for our teachers. Early intervention is key. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Michelle. Our next speaker will be Deb Granowski.
Can I just ask you a quick question? Can I use somebody's name on the administration if I'm saying a positive thank you to them? I just want to make sure I didn't use anybody's name wrong. Okay. Hi, my name is Deb Granowski, and my son Ryan is a second-year student at STEPS. I would like to give a huge shout-out to the STEPS staff for going above and beyond this summer to take a non-ideal situation and provide a welcoming and learning environment for our STEPS students, all while keeping a positive attitude. I would also like to thank Libby Jensen for keeping the lines of communication open during this transition process and working with the parents to address any questions or concerns. A thank you also needs to be given to the three high school principals for accommodating our program in their schools. The STEPS program looks very different than it did several months ago. The STEPS students and teachers have been divided amongst three different high schools. Unfortunately, some of the students are choosing not to go back to a high school environment. Parents have expressed that some feel that the students are taking a step backwards, or they had a negative experience when they attended high school, or the change is causing too much stress and anxiety for them to attend. The students' community has been split, giving less options for role models and friendships. The students have less class options. STEPS can't offer as many classes because of the limited number of teachers at each location, or a specific class is only offered at one location. The students are isolated, and they enter the building through the back door. They listen to the high school announcements every day, informing the students of all the fun activities that are taking place in the high school, but they can't participate in any of the events. By dividing the STEPS program between the three high schools, I have to believe the new arrangement is costing the district more money. Keeping this in mind, the STEPS students deserve a STEPS vision. The STEPS vision should determine what the STEPS program should look like and where it should be placed, not the other way around. For too long, STEPS has been dumped wherever there is available space, and that available space determines what the program looks like. The STEPS program needs a home. A home where the program and students can really thrive, a home where the STEPS staff and students are together, a home where they can properly prepare to become independent members of the adult community, a home where District 204 can be a transition leader. A STEPS vision committee should be formed with the help of teachers. They are the backbone to this program and have amazing ideas, but limited resources to implement them. They have a vision, if someone would just ask them, and we all need to work together. So I ask you today, what is your vision for the STEPS program? And I ask you this because the STEPS students' future depends on you. Thank you.
Thank you. Then Janine McDonough.
Deb and I have very similar... Surprise, surprise. Okay, so my name is Janine McDonough, and my son Ryan attends the STEPS program. With so many last-minute changes to the STEPS program, the entire summer was extremely chaotic. I want to let you know that once again, our STEPS staff and Libby Jensen were heroes. They put the focus on the students and did everything that they could to have the transition to the three new high schools go as smoothly as possible. They put in endless hours all summer long to answer questions and set up the new locations. As they always do, the STEPS staff has gone above and beyond to do what's right for the students. I'm not saying that aren't still issues, but they did everything they could to make the best out of a bad situation. That being said, this new setup is nowhere near an ideal situation. The STEPS community has been divided. The students have been split from some of the only friends that they have. One thing that really saddens me is that some of the STEPS students did not return because the program was moved to the high schools. I've lost my place, sorry. This move seems to be costing more in transportation and additional staff. The costs for the program are higher, but the students are getting less. Resources are now divided between the three locations, so the students have fewer options in terms of class choice and scheduling. Our students have always been included, but now are essentially secluded and segregated. They are assigned to enter the building through a back or a side door, so none of this is fair or doing what's right for them. This move to the high schools has moved the STEPS program backwards. So I ask, how do we make this right? What's the vision for the STEPS program? We've been told that no decision can be made until the demographic study comes back. I think that's going about it backwards. We should not be looking at what space is available and fit the program into that space. That would be a disservice to the students and the program. We should be looking at a comprehensive vision for the program. What do we want the program to look like? We should be looking at other transition programs in our area and taking the best from those programs and combining it with the best from our program to come up with the absolute best program for us. We should be putting an innovative transition program together that really prepares these young adults to be as independent and employable as possible. A program that really prepares them for what comes next for each of them. Then, once we have a true vision for the program, we should find a space that will accommodate the needs and the vision of the program, not the other way around. We need to do what's right for these students, as we need to do it now. Time is short for many of these students, as they're going to age out of the program quickly. Now is the time to bring them all back together and give them a program that truly meets their needs. This is our chance to make that happen. As I've always said, parents, staff, and administrators should come together to find solutions. We hope that at some point, the lines of communication with administration will open back up and that we'll be able to work together. It's in all of our best interest to be able to work together, find solutions, and do the right thing for the STEPS program, the students, and the staff.
Thank you. Thank you. Finally, we have one speaker who's speaking to an agenda item, but since it's on the consent agenda, it would be appropriate for him to speak, so Ralph Pedron.
Dear Board of Education, tonight you are voting again to ratify the natural gas contract. Please allow Todd DePaul to make his presentation before voting. However, ask him the following questions. The contract being voted on today, is it effective July 1st of 2017? If yes, why did FOIA responses state, "No documents are available"? And if the answer is no, why and what contract is in effect? Number two, why will Amrex, company handling a lot of this stuff, not make available those documents and emails I have requested time and time again? They are not a threat to national security. Trust me. Three, is there any documentation supporting this recommendation you are voting on tonight? The decline in price is very severe and needs verification of validating these documents. That wasn't on the agenda. Why did an investigation by 204 reveal questionable RFP issues with Amrex? What were they? If the contract is approved, when does it take effect? Who is the second energy consultant contacted, and where is their report? Why are the original NICOR invoices still not available? It's critical. Again, Mr. DePaul, recommendation has many red flags in it. On June 12, 2017, I pleaded to the board to table this vote to no avail. No doubt it was rubber stamped, and again, I asked to table this vote after allowing Mr. DePaul to respond. This will be the second time the natural gas scandal remains with questionable issues. My comments and recommendations? Number one, remove Todd DePaul as the contact with Amrex. Two, insist J-String demand NICOR invoices to be immediately available. Find a new consultant to replace Amrex. They're not a consultant. They are a broker. Publicly address this scandal. And do not allow verbal explanations without documents supporting them. The taxpayers elected and entrusted this board to oversee the spending of the property tax dollars. I expect this board to do the right thing and strongly consider my report. Again, I am asking to table this vote. I spoke with interim Superintendent Mark McDonald at East Aurora District 131 today, longtime superintendent, very well-respected. He allows me to use his name tonight and made the statement, "District 204 would benefit if they would respond to all the things I've been bringing out the last several months because it would be to the better of the district and allow dollars to be opened up."
Mr. Pedron, that was the end of the three minutes, sir.
Oh, was it?
Yes.
Oh, okay. I just wanted to say, just think that money could go to the STEPS program. That would be great.
We are now moving to the consent agenda and superintendent report. We begin with the superintendent report.
Okay, we've had a great start to the school year thus far. I've been in all of our buildings, and there's a lot of energy and enthusiasm about having our students back. Our six-day enrollment numbers came in at 27,687, which is down 111 students from the same time last year, and so this does continue our downward enrollment trend that we've been seeing since 2010, and we're going to hear a lot more about that tonight from our demographic consultant. So Springfield has provided quite a bit of drama in the last several weeks, ending with the governor signing Senate Bill 1947, which was a compromise bill that changes the school funding formula to an evidence-based model. And we will not know exactly what that means for District 204, how we feared under the evidence-based funding model for several months. This model requires that the Illinois State Board of Education go through a data verification process with school districts to make sure that all the data incorporated into the formula is accurate, and until those final calculations are complete, the initial payments to school districts will hold harmless amounts based on fiscal year 2017. So we're hoping that those payments will start flowing soon. Senate Bill 6, which was the Compromise Budget Appropriation Bill, had some adverse impact on our school funding. It called for a 24% reduction in the corporate personal property replacement tax funding for public schools. That means a reduction of $648,000 for Indian Prairie. So with this and Senate Bill 1947, we're really only expecting to break even or come in just above the FY '17 funding levels when it is all said and done. So at approximately 80% adequacy, we will continue to be a district whose funding falls below the adequacy target, as identified by the state, and while that is not good news, it is a far cry from where this discussion started in 2014, when the original Senate Bill won, which would have resulted in $10 million in cuts in our district. So my thanks to the advocacy of our parents, our staff, our teachers, our school board members, our community, as we worked through several years of these school funding bills. And the next battle, of course, will be ensuring that the state makes good and actually adding new dollars to the formula each year, because the model will not work unless new dollars are added each year. Finally, I want to make sure everyone's aware of the Ninth Annual Early Childhood Community Resource Fair, which will take place from 9:00 AM to 12:00 PM on Saturday, September 9th. It's going to be at the Ann Reed Early Childhood Center in Naperville. This is a collaborative venture with Naperville School District 203, and we take turns hosting, and it's their turn this year. We have more than 60 community resources, which will be available to families raising children between the ages of birth through five years. The event is free, and there's more information available on our websites. That's it.
Thank you. We now move to the consent agenda, and I need a motion that the board approve Consent Agenda Items D through I.
I move that the Board of Education approve Consent Agenda Items D through I as presented.
Second.
I have a motion in the second. Any discussion? With that, Jackie, can you please call the roll?
Mr. Carrubus?
Yes.
Mr. Rising?
Yes.
Ms. Demming?
Yes.
Mr. Resack?
Aye.
Ms. Peel?
Aye.
Ms. Donahue?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Motion passes. Now move to the discussion phase of our meeting, and we begin with an Indian Prairie Education Foundation update.
With props.
And Sue Resmus.
Wake us up, Sue.
With props and enthusiasm approaches us.
There it is. Did I do it wrong? Did I mess it up? I'm good. Awesome. Thank you very much. Well, hello, you guys. Thanks for having me here tonight. I really appreciate it, and as I usually do, I just want to start out with a little bit about who we are and what we do. So Lori and Susan, I think this is the first time both of you guys have been at the table when I've been here. Welcome, and thanks for being here, you guys. I know what it's like to sit in that chair, and it's a lot, so thank you. Thank you for being here and supporting the kids and staff of this district. So just like all of you, the folks that work on the Indian Prairie Educational Board, they're volunteers as well. We're coming up now on... Oh, and they want to make a positive difference as well. So we're coming up on our 30th anniversary. Crazy to think how much this school district has changed since IPF started back in 1988. Can you guys even believe back then? Want to guess how many students we had? 8,007 buildings. Quite a difference from where we are today. So as you look at that, we've come a long way, and back then, the foundation truly focused on the fine arts. You look at some of the things I'm going to share with you, we've come a long way in that regard as well. So you can see our mission up on the board. We want to work in partnership with District 204 to help enrich education for students here in District 204. So five years ago, Kent Duncan stepped up as the second board chairman for IPF, and you can see on the chart what happened during his time as the chair. He helped drive organizational change, and the result was increased revenues that have allowed IPF to give back more. Well, Kent retired this past June, as all of you know, and before he left, I want to share that he did something that I am just so excited about. He worked tirelessly on one thing, and you know what that was? Recruiting. He brought in six new board members in the past eight months, and I have to say, I like to tease him, he's kind of like the Theo Epstein of the foundation world, because you know what? He has assembled a phenomenal team. I hope Mike has brought you guys back the scouting report. Mike, was it not a great board retreat this year? The enthusiasm and the passion I'm seeing out of not only our new board members, but the board members we've had previously? Unbelievable. So tonight, while we have a dynamic group in place, I have our new board chair with us. Rhonda Condon is joining us tonight. So if you guys have not met Rhonda yet, I encourage you not to delay. Meet her as soon as you can. Get to know her. She's a volunteer you want to know. Absolutely amazing, and I am so excited at the direction she's taking this foundation and where we're headed next. So she led that board retreat last month, and yeah, it's going to be great to see what happens from here. So hopefully, you guys all had a chance to take a look at our annual report that I sent you, and instead of reviewing that page by page, I thought I'd just pull out a few of my favorite highlights, and this is one of them, Young Hearts for Life. You guys know the story behind this, and if you don't, it was back in 2009 we started this because there were a few deaths in the district, students with diagnosed heart conditions. Superintendent at the time said, "We are not going to let that happen again," came to the foundation and said, "Would you guys be willing to help fund this?" And of course, we've stepped up. We're proud to have done that again this year. That's about a $50,000 a year price tag each time that we do that. I brought some numbers along with me. These are what I shared with my IPF directors at our annual meeting back in June, and you can see the number of students that took advantage of the free heart screenings this past year. I want to show that the number of volunteers on the side, that's a big number as well. So it's a lot of people that pull off this event and make this possible. This past year, as you can see on the bottom, our largest screening to date. We're always very proud of that. Our goal in the future is to continue to raise awareness about this offering that we give to students. Right now, we've got about 60% of our high school students participating. I'm guessing you guys are like me, we'd like to see that number go up. How many can we get? We want to continue to grow that. So this next slide, do you guys recognize those? I know you do, because they're your board goals. We asked Karen and Mike to share these with the IPF board at our retreat. We talked about how we can be more strategic, IPF as a board, to work with you guys. What are your goals, and how can we align what we do with your goals to help support you and this district better? As we move forward, the rest of my slides, you're going to see a number in the top corner. If you guys didn't figure that out, see, I put a little puzzle in there for you to make sure you went through the slides before I got here, but as we move forward, you'll see that little number. That represents how each of the things we're doing tie to your board goals and how we'd like to do that continuing, moving forward. So this slide, I love this. Karen asked me to make sure that I included this tonight. So these are specific district-wide programs that IPF has budgeted for, and we're going to fund in the 2017-18 school year. Just so you guys know how this process works, every February and March, we ask the district administrative team to come to us with recommendations. What would you guys like to see IPF step up and fund? What happens with those recommendations, then? We take them back to our board. Our board vets them, goes through them, and says, "You know what? I think we can totally make that happen this year." Or, "You know what? I don't think we can raise that much money. I don't think that's possible." Well, I am thrilled to share that this year, everything that you see, those were all the district requests we got. We're able to fund everything that you guys asked us for this year, so we're very excited about that. A couple that I just want to pull out and draw your attention to, a big thank you to the Dunham Fund yet again. You see number two on the list, Expanding Robotics. This is the third year in a row that Dunham has stepped up and helped make that possible here in District 204, so that is very exciting. I'm also going to do a shout-out real quick to Alicia Sworsberry. Thank you, guys. Great hire, is all I'm going to say, because she came on her first week on board, wrote a dynamite grant proposal, just like that, and we got the funding for that already. came in and did a dynamite presentation to the board to really explain this new program. This is something new that the district administrative team brought to us and said, "We'd like to see you guys fund this year." Dynamite job. That was something they piloted at high school last year, as you guys know, and we're thrilled that we can support it this year at the middle school level. We think that's going to be a great program. And then finally, the other one I wanted to call your attention to, Valley Runway. So last year, the Valley Runway project was a teacher grant that we gave out. The program went so well that the district came back to us this year and said, "You know what? You guys, love it if you can fund it a little bit further so we can expand that program." So all of this, you know, the support of all these, it meets IPF's mission that you guys saw in the first slide, but it also supports what you guys are doing in the school district goals, and we want to help students achieve academically. Oh, so I have a gift for each of you.
Ooh.
So this is what we gave to all the school board members, or no, the school board members, all the school district employees on their first day back. So you guys are all getting a little clip. Don't put that in your fridge. For me, a little magnet clip. And a postcard. Okay, the clip is super cool. Everybody likes a good clip, or at least I do. But it's the postcard that I really want to draw your attention to. So what that is, it's basically what we're trying to do. And when you look at that, what's it say? Provide funding. We want to help staff with funding some of their great projects. And as you guys have seen, it's teacher grants. It's some awesome stuff that they help put together, ideas they've got. And where do you find those sources to fund that? I'm so proud that we're able to do that. The next slide, you're going to see how well that's gone. But another piece that you see on this card on the back that we promoted this year was our new grant resource page. So while we would like to fund every single project that comes to us, sometimes we can't. But boy, it's sure nice to be able to go, "You guys, thank you for applying. If you didn't get the grant from us, because it doesn't quite fit our specifications, guess what? Here's some other options, other places you can go for funding." Later this month, we're going to have a grant workshop that is on September the 19th. So if any staff are listening, you can jump online and you can register for that. It'll be right here at the CEC on the 19th from 4:15 to 5:00. What's cool about that, we're bringing in one of the LMC directors from one of our buildings. She got a nice-sized grant from us a year ago, and then I watched, and she got grants from other places. So I went and had a conversation with her. Wow, is she ambitious and outgoing, and she's going to come to our grant workshop and share a little bit more about that, how to write a grant to get money for IPF, but also how you can take that further in other places you can look to really fund those projects that you'd like to make happen in our schools. So we hope to keep growing our grant program, of course, and you can see from the numbers that we've increased the number of applications and grants that have been awarded, and we love that. We want to be able to keep supporting teachers and what they want to do and help provide funding for those awesome projects. Oh, if any of you guys are interested, we would love to have you join us for what promises to be a fabulous day, and that's going to be the Grant Celebration Tour in November. You're welcome to join us. We're going to come out and recognize those teachers that are getting awarded grants from us. So if you're interested, by all means, shoot me an email, and I'll make sure you're on the bus with us. So Team IPF, okay, now I'm going to tell you, get out your phones or your calendars, whatever you write it on, write down two dates for me, you guys. October the 21st and October the 22nd. Again, would love to have you guys join us, because that's when we'll be cheering on, on the 21st, the kids' runners up in that right-hand corner. Right now, we're already at 430 kids that are registered. Pretty cool. Last year, we had 385, so we've already surpassed that. We still have another week to go of registration, sign up. So until September 15th, if you've got kids or no kids, ages 5 to 12, who want to run their very first marathon, they can come out and join us. What's cool about this is, they get to run for their school. They pick who they want to represent. So we're helping them, helping parents give a choice of a healthy option to their kids and teaching them how to make those healthy choices. We're also teaching them about giving back and how good it feels to run for something besides just yourself. So it's a pretty cool program. And then, of course, Team IPF is on Sunday morning on October the 22nd, so we'd love to have you join us for that as well. If you haven't already seen the video, the Team IPF video from last year, it's on 204tv.org, check it out. If you don't get through that video and not feel inspired by these people that have put in all this time and effort for everyone across the district, I don't know what to tell you, because it's really good stuff. So Mike and Kathy, thank you so much. You guys will forever be Team IPF alums. You're always welcome to come back and join us again, but thank you, guys, for all you've done. You know what this program is about and what it does. So the numbers really tell the story. Look at the increase in participation in the last four years. Anybody want to do the math on that fast? I think that's like 965%. That's pretty cool that we've seen that. And it's just a different way, a unique opportunity for staff, parents, community members, and alumni to really get involved and support this district. Last year, it was the single largest campaign in the foundation's history. This event, how cool is that, that people are coming around that and really pulling it together? So this year, we've got 335 runners that are going to represent all 33 schools across District 204 in the half marathon, and 166 of those are staff members. I think that says a lot about the staff in this district as well. All 13 of our Spirit Squad locations were full within two days, so we had that many people that jumped on board and said, "We want to come out and be a part of that, and we're trying to squeeze in a few more, because schools are going, 'We really want to join as well.'" Ooh, and I forgot a number with the 335 I wanted to share. 10 of those runners are building principals. Says a lot to the leaders in this district as well. Very cool. So, oh, sign-up deadline for the kids, 10 days away. I think I've given you everything about Team IPF, except one more shout-out, and that is to our sponsors. Check this out. Doesn't this look really good? Loving this, you guys. So it really, it shows how many sponsors we have this year, and what I'm thrilled with, we've upped the game. It's 15,000 more in sponsorships this year. So I think as you see the program grow, people learn more about us, it's really inspiring to see that. Some great vendors on there as well that support the school district that we're really proud to have part of our team. So really, again, Team IPF, it's a trifecta, you guys. It's the chance to raise awareness, it's the chance to engage people, and it's the chance to raise fun. Oh, and a bonus, it is a lot of fun. So A-plus Award. So when Karen and Mike came to our board retreat and they shared with us about your board goals, guess which one they really emphasized a lot on? Number two? Talked about number two quite a bit. They talked about the importance of staff. How many of you guys made it to the opening day ceremony? Um, Murray, did you guys get to hear him? Wow, was that not amazing? Just absolutely, he really reconfirmed that message, though, didn't he? How important is staff? You guys all know that. What an incredible difference that they make, the power that they have to make an impact on our kids. So how can we help recognize that? How can we really say thank you to our staff? Well, we're excited to be starting year number four of the A-plus Award, and it's really an opportunity for parents, for students, for alumni, for community members to nominate a staff and help us tell those great stories that we know go on here in 204. So nominations are open through this Thursday, if you want to nominate somebody for our first award winner of the year. It's a great time to submit one, if you know somebody who's deserving. So just a few more numbers for you guys. A big thank you again to Wells Fargo Advisors. They've partnered with us for now for four years. Really thrilled to have them back. And this is another slide that I shared with my board at our annual meeting. What we're going to be focusing on this year, you guys see the nominations? We want to continue to grow that. So that 127, we certainly hope that we can pull those up. A little piece that I'm not sure folks know that I want to share, and that is, every nomination that gets written, those get sent on to the staff at the end of the year. So we hold them all year, and so we can pick each month, and you know, if one doesn't win in August, it might win the next month or the next month. But at the end of the year, we take all of those and send those out. How do I know how powerful that is? Because I remember one of the first phone calls I got from a teacher after those hit mailboxes, she said, "Thank you. Thank you so much. That's the best piece of mail I've seen all year." So when you write those, when you share those stories with people that have impacted your kids, it makes a difference for them as well. So I think that's really important. And the other shout-out, I want to do those video views on the side. Okay, wow, that is fabulous. Thank you to our communications department. Amazing stuff going on. It's just really, really good, the stories they've been able to tell. And to be able to see some of that in a district this size, that's pretty cool stuff. So my last slide, it's really an ask for all of you guys, a thank you ask. I want your help. Can you guys, as school board members, do me a favor? And that's when you see folks out in the district, whether it's our staff who give a dollar a paycheck, whether it's our parents who give $25 each time they check the box on registration, whether it's our incredible sponsors like Charles Rutenberg Reality, they're upping the game each year, and they're giving us sponsorship dollars, or whether it's folks like the Dunham Fund, $38,000 in grant money this year alone. If you guys could do me a favor, when you see them, just say thank you, because it takes all of that. It takes all of those groups to really be able to do what we do. Okay, and I talked really fast. Big surprise, I'm kind of shocked. Shocking, right? So I went back and forth, story or no story? Okay, so I'm going to just share one little closing story. So for those of you who know me, you know, I've been around for a while, and I got involved when my youngest was in kindergarten. So this is dating me just a little bit, because my youngest last week sent me a text from her first day of class at college. And all the text said was, "Wow, architecture was totally the right move." So first, I followed that up with a phone call, and man, was she fired up. It was so cool, because do you know what she said? She says, "Hey, Mom, you know that Project Lead the Way class? You know that one that you had me take back in high school? I can totally see now why that makes a difference when you get to college. Do you know what it would be like if every kid got to do that before they got here?" So we went on, and we talked about the rest of her classes, and it was really hearing from your own kid what an impact this district has made in preparing her. And isn't that what we want for all kids? I've heard it so many times from so many parents that have told so many great stories about the kids going off, and they were surprised, and they were thrilled, and they were delighted because their kids were really prepared when they got to college. And again, isn't that what we want? We want to set them up for success. So kudos, you guys. Kudos to 204. You guys are doing a good job, and I appreciate it, and I know others do as well. And on behalf of the IPF Board, we're thrilled to be a part of that as well. So thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I covered it all, so there's no questions, right?
Questions or comments?
Well, and I'm sure, I'm sure Mike has done this, but, you know, I know from the board, please express thanks to your Board of Directors, Rhonda, for all the work you guys do, because I know it's a volunteer job as well, and you guys put a lot of hours in, but clearly, it makes a huge difference for our district, so thank you.
You guys, thank you, and keep doing what you're doing.
Anything else? Well, I have one. Can you just explain to everybody, because you gave the impression that those kids are going to run a marathon on a Saturday?
They are going to run a marathon, Mike. No, it is the best marathon ever. So it's for kids ages 5 to 12, and they're going to run a marathon one mile at a time. So if they sign up between now and October the 21st, they're going to run one mile at a time with mom or dad or big brother or big sister, and they're going to log it on their mileage log. They're going to get 25 of those miles done, and they're going to bring that mileage log on race day, and then they get to run the last 1.2 miles with all the other kids. And when they finish their marathon, I hope you guys are there to help us celebrate them, give them the high fives when they get their finisher medal, and they can say, "I ran a marathon." It was very cool last year. We had a little girl, five years old, she was our youngest runner, and she was so excited because mom has been doing marathons, and she's watched mom forever, and finally, this was her chance. She really felt like a rock star in her tutu and her yellow shirt as she finished her marathon, just like mom. So it's a pretty cool opportunity. Thank you, Mike.
And we thank you for the collaboration and cooperation with the board and the entire district, and we look forward to working with the new leadership.
That's good stuff. Thank you, you guys.
Thanks.
Thank you.
And now, the demographic study report.
Rob, we're going to surround you with people.
Good evening, board members. It's my pleasure to introduce to you Mr. Rob Schwartz, who was here in the district in 2012 with the demographic study. We've been in contact off and on over those five years, and recently, under the board's direction, engaged RSP and Associates again to perform a demographic study, because the district has changed over those five years, and the economy has changed, and he's here to give that presentation. Other members of the cabinet that you know are with us, and we're going to assist in answering some questions at the end. It's a long presentation with a lot of detailed information, so as we get through it, I'm going to ask Rob if he wants questions along the way, or do you want them at the end?
If you have a question, as we're going through it, raise your hand, and I'd be happy to acknowledge you and answer the question if I can at that point.
So that will get started.
All right, good evening. When I first came into the room, Dr. Sullivan's first response to me was, "Wow, you have a lot more gray hair. Did we do that to you?" I have teenage daughters, so that explains everything. I don't speak as fast as your previous speaker.
Thank you.
Welcome. But since I do go long, I brought some candy.
Ooh.
Start you out on the right foot. So again, it's been five years.
Mine spoke really well.
And we'll talk a little bit about how well things went from five years ago. We'll also talk about, really, starting out, what is our enrollments? What's the demographics? What does it mean for the final build-out, the maturity of the district? How are we seeing some of the turnover? So some of this re-greening, maybe some graying, where we're seeing fewer students in some of the neighborhoods? And then we'll talk about the projections. What does that mean for your future? You already heard you're down this year from last year, so that kind of gives you a foretelling of what the future may have in store. And then we'll get into some next steps, which I know at this point, as a board, you're deliberating, what are those next steps going to be? What does this information mean? So hopefully, as we leave tonight, you'll have a lot of information about what's happening with enrollments, demographics, development, and then maybe what you need to do next. So these next couple of slides are, just to give you some context of our company, I'm the owner. We've broken our company into three areas of planners, GIS analysts, I don't bring them here, they're great, quite a few of them are millennials. Very difficult in this type of setting for them to talk about their technical information, but we need them for the maps and the analysis that we've provided you. We also have education consultants, if we get into any sort of facilitation, any in-depth needs for what happens in the buildings as it relates to capacity and so on. demographics, development, and then maybe what you need to do next. So these next couple of slides are, just to give you some context of our company, I'm the owner. We've broken our company into three areas of planners, GIS analysts. I don't bring them here. They're great. Quite a few of them are millennials. Very difficult in this type of setting for them to talk about their technical information. But we need them for the maps and the analysis that we've provided you. We also have education consultants if we get into any sort of facilitation, any in-depth needs for what happens in the buildings as it relates to capacity and so on. And then here's a map that just kind of gives you a visual of the work that we're doing throughout the Midwest. All right, a little bit on how we're able to do what we have done for your district. It's really a combination of data sets and information that was provided to us when I came up and did the building tour here early in the summer to understand how this develops in the southwest part of your community, how we were seeing some of the infill developments, how are they actually maturing, developing, and so on. Use a whole host of data sets, ranging from the counties, townships, cities, census, ESRI, which is the software that we use for the mapping elements. Three key things about the districts, and that is enrollment is projected to decrease. I've broken it out on that first paragraph of blue in a way that you can see the range of decrease each year. And the decrease is each year is from about 0.9% to 1.2% each year, aggregating as we get out to five years from now, to a little over 5% fewer students than what we have here in the 17, 18 school year. Then you can see the breakdown of where that is in each of the elementary, middle school, and high school. We then have a bullet point because enrollment and how your buildings function directly relate to the capacity. And so those red level bullet points indicate where we are having some enrollment challenges at buildings. We don't have the challenges district-wide, but we do at specific buildings. As we've seen some of the shifts of enrollments, as we've seen new developments come online, particularly at the golf course and the stuff down in the southwest. How are those impacting the space that we have in the buildings? And then developments, we know that you're a mature district and the final developments are kind of getting themselves built out. And I see there's a question, so I'll...
Yeah, before you go to development, can you, this probably right at the beginning is a good time to talk about capacity. Because sometimes you can have so many students in a school building, yet if you have different programs in that school building, it affects really the number of kids that comfortably can fit into the school. So can we discuss that a little bit?
Absolutely. I'll kick it off and then my counterparts around me probably will have some comments to that. The capacities that were given to us are kind of an optimal capacity that likely take into account the educational programming that is in those buildings or could take place in those buildings. And those became the benchmark as we're projecting the enrollment. How does that meet up with being over or under that number? And so with that...
Let me start, Mr. Razak, by saying that we looked at where we have self-contained classrooms and where we have classrooms that are used for alternative sources and backed those out of the capacities that we gave Rob. And that's what we did in 2012. You have to take those into consideration when you're doing any type of a boundary shift because those spaces are still being used in that location or they have to be moved. Through that process, we discovered that there's 45 classrooms that are used throughout the district that are used for a variety of reasons, whether they're storing excess desks in operations and maintenance or excess tables or gowns for communication services and things of that nature. So those things are part of capacity. The other thing is that each of the different levels, elementary, middle, and high school, and the different characteristics of the school, impact capacity. So, you know, if every student was exactly the same, you could put 30 kids in a classroom and say, "That classroom is full." But some kids need to be programmed with smaller classes of five or 10 kids. Some programs require kids to be in smaller settings all day long. And so we have to take those into consideration. Those are the individual capacities of schools. So you have to take in those individual populations, whether it's a gifted classroom, a student with an English language learning need or a special education need or anything of that nature. So the capacities and the needs are different by level. And then they're different by school. Because some schools are more alike or homogeneous across the board than others.
Give me an example at the elementary level. Does the elementary level include music and arts as part of the capacity for the educational programming or not?
No, not... We didn't break down into the classroom use. We made sure that we could still have the art and music classrooms there. So we didn't count that space as a space to put 30 kids in. But it is, as you know, much more complicated at the elementary level because the 30 kids, they don't come. The kindergarten through first, fifth graders don't come in nice little pods of 30 that fit in or whatever magic number we wanted to pick come in in pots of that. So the other thing that plays into is some of our elementary schools have large ELL programs. So they need a large space. Some buildings have half-size classrooms, so they could maybe use that. Others don't. So that piece of the puzzle, we didn't really look at that part yet.
So on your enrollment, I was surprised to see middle schools decrease so much more than the other two segments. Can you explain why that was the case?
Absolutely. When we get through this presentation, I have some slides where I'll be able to pull that out and I'll make a note. So your comment will have a graphic that everyone else can follow along. Good question. Any other questions about capacity? All right, so when we start out on our analysis, we have to have geography back up what we're seeing in your district. And so this first map shows you the district boundary, which is the purple line. And the solid colors represent the cities on that makeup or have a part of their entity within your district boundary. We further break the district into the elementary attendance areas and then the middle school attendance areas, and then as well the high school attendance areas. Hopefully, the 11 by 17s you have are a little bit better than what you see in this presentation.
I'm assuming they're in order the same way they're...
Absolutely, in the order as they are in this presentation.
Great.
We then further break them into these planning areas that are broken out by the type of use. And more specific for the district is residential. Where are we going to see students? So where are the single families, the townhomes, the apartments, mobile homes, all of those type of entities? We're looking at, based on the parcel data sets that we've received from the counties, cities, townships, and so on. And there's a little over 750 of these planning areas in your district that we're monitoring what's happening with enrollments, demographic, and development changes. And so if we look at that a little bit in greater detail, what you're able to see here is we're zoomed in to Frye Elementary. And you can see the green lines represent the planning area. You can faintly see some gray lines, which are the parcels. You can see the streets. The dots represent the students. The larger the dot, the greater the grade. And you'll see that there's multiple dots on top of dots because households tend to have more than one child. And so this gives you that visual of the power of bringing all this GIS together in the analysis that we're providing the district. This all feeds into these two different formulas. I won't spend a lot on the formulas other than you need to understand it's a statistical model. And think about where you live. If there are five kindergartners, what's the likelihood over time, over the next five years, as they age into first, second, third, and fourth, are they still living in the same planning area? Whether it's an apartment, single-family home, are they still there? Do they move out? Does somebody move in? And if they move in, are they likely to be that same grade or a different grade? That's what this model is trying to track, is that flow of in-outs and the stability or instability of what's happening in each of these planning areas.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
So these little dots that represent our students, is that current students? Or is this five years from now? Because this is a five-year...
This would be specifically to 16, 17 student data. I know we've stepped into 17, 18. And a great point, I'll make a comment on this on some of the maps because all of the maps have not evaluated 17, 18. We're just now in that first week, right? This was up through 16, 17 and what we're forecasting from 17, 18 to 21, 22. So some of the components that are in that model, so we have cohort growth or cohort change. So if we have 2,100 kindergartners, how does that change over time as they become first and second? External growth, who's moving into the district? Kindergarten change, that oscillates a lot. If you've watched the news when I come up here, they're expecting a boom of children. And does anyone know why? If you watch the news, you know Cubs won the World Series, right? So there tends to be a lot more babies in the cities where that happens. So there's some things you have to forecast that will have an impact with the future kindergarten size. We also have the economy, things that are happening with down in Houston. Will have a direct impact with some of the construction costs, even here in Chicago with some of the plants that have been taken offline. So all of those things have a different impact on whether the area is being built or it's already built, if it's a $500,000 house or it's only $150,000. I won't read each of these bullet points, but what we wanted you to get a sense of with this model is there's different things that are having an impact on these 700 or 50-some planning areas related to what's happening with the economy. We see interest rates increase. You have less affordability for your house. If we talk about millennials, a great example is for a dinner tonight. A waitress was telling me she just graduated from college. And I was telling her, well, the average college debt is about $35,000. And she said she has $100,000 of debt. And again, in psychology. So these are the challenges as we move forward, is the cost for college is having an impact on the housing choice that people will be able to select as they become available for the type of housing, for the type of family they would like to have. We also look at some of the census data. And so this particular map shows you with census population estimates out in 2021, the red and orange areas are where they would be indicating the greatest number of zero-to-four-year-olds would be residing in 2021. A couple of things that stand out when you look at the census data is it doesn't have anything with the golf course complex. It shows that still in blue. And then when you look down on the southwest side of your district, it still shows it in blue. So there's some gaps with the census data and that's offset by our understanding of what's happening with some of the development. We also want to know where the women are because that directly relates to the children. And so this is again, looking at those same census data sets to understand where we see the females, where we see children, and so on, to understand how this all relates to a potential future number of kindergartners as we get out to 21. This, page 19, I'll come back to one of the Board members' comments about why we would potentially see more decrease in the middle school grades than we would in the elementary or high school. So this is historically looking at the data that was sent to us going back to 2003, '04 through 16, '17. And it shows you by grade to include the preschool and grade 13, which is some of the special education students that are enrolled that don't get classified as K through 12. So what you see here and why you're going to see a greater decrease in the middle school is if you look at some of the classes that are currently in second and third grade that are less than 2,000 students, they're, for instance, in 16, '70 or 16, '17, the second grade class is 1,870 students. As they move into the middle school grades, they're significantly smaller than the middle school grades that we see there now. That's part of the story. There is some change that is happening from grade to grade. And so here on page 20, you can see what that change has been as they cohort through. So as they become first to second or ninth to 10th grade. When you go down to those bottom two rows, you'll see a three-year average and a three-year weighted average. That's important because the three-year weighted average, we put the greatest influence on what's most recently happened and changed, where the three-year average is just the average of the last three years. And so this kind of gives us an understanding of what that trend has been as the cohort from grade to grade. So traditionally, we see some increases in those grades from year to year. And so even though it's a smaller grade in second grade, as they become sixth grade, they should get larger. But they don't get as large as what they currently are now. Or if you look at that second grade class and you go back in time, you can see that the 18, '70 is significantly smaller than what we see if you look at 10, '11 where there was over 2,000 students. So it helps explain a little bit of what's happening. But there's also some other things with in-migration and out-migration that I'll cover. But I think page 19 and page 20 help address why we would be saying there's a natural tendency for fewer middle school students than what we see there today. We also put together some demographic explanations here. Again, this would just be five minutes, just looking at this to try to understand what some of these things mean as far as the median household income, what's owner and renter occupied. We have a companion document to this that's the update to the demographic analysis. That's a very large volume that if you haven't received today, you should at your next Board meeting. That's by building as well as by districts. You can see a lot of this information played out with what it means to each of the current attendance areas. So some other things, again, just some demographic information of what's happening in the district with there's limited residential space. The housing slowdown is related to the limited residential space, but also with the last housing slowdown, people stayed in their houses a little bit longer. And then we also know that when we reach a certain price of a house, it tends to move a little bit slower than those that are more affordable. And we have some maps that help illustrate that. So this map here with the in-migration is very interesting because we tried to benchmark this to what we explained to you back five years ago. And so these are students that are new to the district in 16, '17. Again, we didn't have the 17, '18, so we're not here in 15, '16. And so back in 11, '12, that same data set had only 2,031. In 16, '17, it had increased to 2,013. The dots represent the location of where those new students are. The color of dot represents whether it's red elementary, blue middle school, and green high school. At this extent, there could be multiple dots. Because if you remember, when I showed you the planning area detail, there's more than one child in many of these households that may be in different levels, elementary, middle school, or high school. But again, just to give you that visual of where we're seeing new students. We did the same thing with the out-migration. So these are students that were residing in your district the previous year but not attending in the year that we were doing the evaluation, or in this case with this map, in 16, '17. So you can see back in 11, '12, there was 1,900 students that had left. But in 16, '17, that had dropped to 1,600 students. So that gave you a more positive increase of students with just the migration of students in and outs. And again, the breakdown of red middle school or elementary, blue middle school, green high school. Again, you can see the pattern is it's throughout your district. There's greater clusters, concentrations on the north side than there is on the south side. Because of the planning areas that we look at, this particular map is looking at the change that we've seen by planning area, exact change of students from 12, '13 to 16, '17. The orange areas had the increase, the green areas a decrease. The darker the orange, the greater the increase. The darker the green, the greater the decrease. Really what stands out here is the fewer number of students in planning areas on the south side of the district. You see a lot more of a green sea of change in planning areas that's been a decrease. We also, just because we like to do some different things with statistical analysis, this map is applying a square mile factor to every planning area because they're a different size to get at what the density would look like if everything was based on a square mile to really hone in where are we seeing the greatest number of students. So the orange and red areas, we see the highest concentration of students. And as we radiate down to the blues and purples, very few students. This map here on 27 is a way of looking at what I showed you on page 25 with exact change of students in the planning areas to the density change of students from 12, '13 to 16, '17. Again, some people like to see some things that are parallel back to the statistical analysis. And that's what this map shows. Very similar pattern. This map here shows you based on where the students live, this heat density. The red and orange areas, again, where we see the greatest concentration of students. And if I showed you some of the animated GIFs that our team has put together, you can see how there's been pockets where it's really increased in its density and then other areas where it's decreased over the last four or five years. That's something kind of interesting to look at if you're one to like some of the visuals and maps.
Is there a correlation to the type of housing? Oftentimes, we hear, especially with our development land grant stuff, that apartments have a certain kind of density, single-family houses have a different kind of density, and so on. So is part of this density heat map factored into that?
Absolutely. Well, the heat maps that we're showing are actual students. So where are they at by those planning areas? But as far as the yield rate that we see out of some of these developments, it's very different. There's some apartment complexes where we will see quite a few students, like up by the station, a lot more than what we would see in other parts of the district. The same thing with the price break of homes. Typically, the more expensive homes have fewer students or they may have students that have gone through your system. And we haven't seen the recirculation of their housing to now see new students come into play. And that's why I allude back to the housing slowdown that occurred that really, I think, made people hunker down. And so we didn't see as much of the turnover. And I think you're seeing some of that played out here where they're in the more expensive homes, there's fewer kids. And that's why we've seen some of that decrease. Excellent question. So as we step in, great prelude into some of the demographics. I already spoke a little bit about the millennials and the conundrum they're in. And we already know with data, they're not buying cars. We know that their ability to afford homes is a little bit different than Gen X or the Baby Boomers. We also know that based on some of the conversations we've had with the cities, you may drive by some of, let's say, the commercial developments and see that there's nothing happening there. Well, they may be leased, they're just not being occupied. So there's some interesting things that may make you think things aren't as good as they could be based on some of the lease occupancies. You've heard me talk about this being a mature district. That gets into, when we look at the median age, it's slightly younger than what the census US average is. We think that's going to start going up as we see, again, many of these households aging. Capacity of facilities, we've already talked, spoke a little bit about that. And that's directly related to, again, as we have enrollments changing, there's some trials and tribulations in some of these buildings. This graphic here is to try to give you a baseline of what's been happening in your district as it relates to census population change, the building permits, and the enrollment change over time. Everyone always gets alarmed when I show this graphic when you look at the 2010 to 2011 and you see the green line just dip down. Really, the bulk of that change is we have new data. And so the census back in 2000, 2010, they're trucking along and saying, "Here's what's going to happen in your community." And then they get real data in 2010 with the decennial census. And then there's an adjustment. So bulk of that green, it wasn't like people said, "Hey, we don't like being here and we left." It's really an adjustment in the census data. Some of the things that really show that you're a mature district is the correlation to these three lines. And we see slight population increases as we see some of the remaining developments build out. We're seeing some of the apartment dwelling units bring in different type of families than what was initially thought would be there. And then we see the building... And then we see the building trend is it's starting to wind down just because of the available lands. And then the enrollment change, you can see we've been decreasing over the last few years. And a lot of that, again, is just based on larger senior classes graduating, smaller incoming kindergarten classes, is generally to speak about that. But again, a visual of what's happening. We look at some of the yield rates of what's happening with the number of students. So a way to look at this is if you go across the row of two thousand three, two thousand four, all the way to the district column, you see that point six one eight, that basically is saying that there's about sixty-two pre-K twelve students for every one hundred units in the district. If we go to that middle column that says total units, we had about forty-three thousand units in two thousand three, two thousand four within your district boundary. As we go down, each of those rows breaks that out, and you can see that we've decreased in the number of students for every one hundred units, from that roughly sixty-two down to almost fifty-nine students for every one hundred units, but yet we've increased in the total number of units that are available in your district, going from forty-three thousand to almost forty-eight thousand. So again, just another way of looking at some of the data sets that we're trying to understand, what is that yield rate of students going to be in each of these seven hundred or fifty planning areas? We look at the median home value, so if you apply this map here, if you look at the least affordable homes are for the most part in the south side of your district. So if you looked at where your students are, the value of homes, you can see that there is a strong correlation, the higher the value of home, the less likely you are to have school-aged children with the actual data sets that you're seeing in your district. So again, the orange-red areas are the least affordable, and as you get to the blues, the most affordable. We also have this map that, again, zoomed at this extent, it's very difficult to see, but you can start seeing some of the building activity that's happening at the golf course on the north side, and then specifically down on the southwest side with those developments there, just south of Wolf's Crossing. From all of the touring that we did, the meeting of the cities, the data sets that we collected, we created these various planning areas. And we tried to space them out with the likelihood that we potentially could see developments. And some of these are pending, they could change as soon as tomorrow, depending on who owns the land, because there's two things that must happen. Whoever owns the land must have a desire for it to be developed, and whatever they develop has to have a market. So the green areas are those that we were seeing activity now, and the yellow areas are areas that we potentially could see in the next five years. The purple areas are likely beyond five years, closer to ten years. But again, that could change, and that's why I'm making sure as the preliminary plots go through the city process, you're monitoring those to make sure that you're fully accounting for those developments. So again, we have some bullet points with some of the conclusions. The big thing is there's limited opportunities, some infill opportunities, whether it's the Wagner Farm or some other areas that we've highlighted on the map, but we're anticipating that the number of units will start to wane after these remaining developments get built out. So a little bit with the enrollment projections. When we look back, what we projected five years ago, pretty solid for the amount of change that we've seen happen in your district. So you can see the breakdown at the elementary level, the middle school level, high school level, and then overall for the district of about ninety-eight percent accuracy. So some of the things that we really honed in on, unlike all models, you can understand what you were forecasting and what those variables were, was how do we understand what's happened over the last five years? And then with the understanding of what we're seeing from the realtors, the city folks, what do we think may happen over the next five years with this now five years of newer data? And that's how we get into the enrollment forecast. So what we have here is looking at that a hundred thousand foot view of what the aggregate of the enrollments are with preschool, the elementary, the middle school, and the high school. And one thing, we're going to update this graphic, and I think the preschool, because we wanted to pull them out separate, are also double counted in the elementary for the previous years. So we'll update this graphic for you, but I wanted to highlight that to you, because as I was flying up here today, I noticed that that seems a little bit high at the elementary level, and that will be fixed on the graphic here. It had no effect on what our analysis is, just the final visual. But you can see the breakdown as we go forward in time. Again, if you go back to page nineteen and page twenty, where you can see the actual by-grade numbers, you can see that as they move their way through the system, they create this pig-in-the snake effect, where we start to have more capacity at the middle school, and eventually some more capacity at the high school. Anyone who grinned, they maybe grew up on a farm and understand that pig-in-the snake.
So I have a question. This enrollment is actual residents of our district. I mean, we got into a bunch of questions that were asked about the non-residents that are in the school. So this is just our district, not any of those non-residents?
Yeah, this does not include any private, parochial, or homeschool. And the only students that would classify into an area that you might think are not your students are, where did, was, how do we coin them? Basically, they go to a facility outside the district, but they're Indian Prairie students. Outplayed students. So those are in these numbers here, and these are the day six baseline, year to year to Another thing, as we get into this table here that I'll explain, one of the caveats to this forecast is as you start to monitor more the, or actually utilize the board policy of enforcement of resident students, and we start seeing some of the things that have occurred from what happened in fifteen sixteen to sixteen seventeen, and as that's fully rolled out to all the buildings at the manner in which it is, some of this enrollment could shift between buildings, and may even potentially be fewer students as we go forward in time. That would be the negative side. The other flip side could be, as they become aware that they're not in the district or don't have the valid address, they actually do move to a place within the district. So there's always six of this, half dozen of the other. So as we look at this enrollment, what we tried to do is provide you a way, when you look at this table, to understand what could be happening in each of these buildings. So if we start on the left-hand side, we have each of the buildings, we have the capacity provided by the district, the grades that are being served in those facilities, and as we move to the right, we've provided you the enrollment two different ways. And we provided you them two different ways, because there's where the student resides, so that's the green font color. So physically, do they reside in that boundary, and in those grades, attend that, or not attend, but should attend that facility. The attend is based on the student data that we receive from the district, we know the building that they're attending, but they may be residing in a different building. So the difference between the reside and the attend gets you the flow of student choice between your buildings, because this is an apple-to-apple comparison of the number of students at each of the elementary, middle school, and high school levels. Question?
Quick question. So some of these, the attend, some of these could be because they requested an attendance exemption, for whatever reason, they live in, elementary live in the White Eagle District, but went to Frye, for instance. So that, that's, some of this could be that they are actually in our district, but they're in a different, but they live in a different boundary location.
Correct. There could be, it's a combination of things. You see a difference between those numbers, partly for people who've asked for an attendance exemption, and we've granted it based on hardship in elementary, that's usually childcare. There are also, it could be that a student resides in one school, that's their homeschool, but they attend a different one because that's where the special education programming is. That could be another reason. And then we also have some residual students who were part of school choice, and so they were either from Longwood or Georgetown to Kendall or Cloud, and some of those students are still allowed to, by law, to go to those other schools. So that's where you see some of those differences.
And that's where you get into the capacity, where the programs are located, and why you see some of the flow of students to the south, because that's where there is available capacity.
Rob, you want to hold on a second? We're going to let our high school students get to their homework.
They never leave during my presentation?
They always leave when I present.
You didn't give them candy.
The other thing that you'll see on this table that helps alert you to potential capacity challenges will be where there's the orange shading. And again, the difference between reside is, this is the projection based on all of our analysis, they are in the attendance area, and this is where they would go to school if they all went to that building, based on where that zone is. The attend is what we're trying to get there, is what that six-day enrollment count will be, where will they actually be taking their classes? And so this can change based on where programs are located, and I think they're fairly close to what you were seeing this year. There may be a little bit of some differences, again, because of some last-minute placing of how that relates. And I think if we go back to what, I think we're within this year about forty students of what we forecasted would be here this year with what you actually have. So that's always a good baseline to know.
I have a question. Oh, sorry. With preschool, I noticed the future enrollment is, it's above capacity. Is that because of there's, you said there's three, the note here, was it the three different satellite locations? Is that just a?
Correct.
Okay, so note one, location is above capacity?
Correct. Then we do the same breakdown for, with the number of elementary buildings, goes on to the next page. And you can see, no challenges with any of the buildings from Gomber to Patterson, and then from Peterson to Young. Again, very, no real capacity challenges as we look at those buildings, other than nineteen twenty in Peterson, where it briefly goes over. We do the same breakdown at the middle school level. So again, you can see with Hill Middle, just slightly over, and then it goes back under the capacity. But again, district-wide available capacity throughout the district, available space in each of the buildings.
Why is a capacity listed as zero for the transition program?
Because they're physically not in a building. So for the in-district students that attend outside, they're not in a building, so we don't have a capacity for that.
And what about any implements? The capacity is also listed as zero, because we have a physical building, but is it just the varying numbers, or what?
The issue is the capacity would be different depending upon what kind of programming we put there.
That's what I figured.
The capacity, I mean, I think part of the discussion we had earlier is to not get so hung up on that capacity number, because it does depend upon how we use that space. It depends upon what we determine, you know, if we could make Sally so happy that we could decrease our class sizes to fifteen, the capacity, the building capacities would be gravely different. So it's really, it's, we've talked about this in how many conference calls. It really does make a difference. Even at the high school, we're finding spaces now with kids who have Chromebooks, we don't need the lab spaces that we had before, and so we're converting that into space that we can use for students. So it's, there's nothing pure about those capacity numbers.
And then again, you see the breakdown at the high school, and the greatest challenge is at Mateo Valley for the high school. But again, district-wide, there's available capacity, it's just a single building that we have the challenge in. So with that, next steps, and maybe some other questions, really some of the things that we're leaving you with is there may be some more exploratory that's needed with the capacity, or some more workshop time with the board to understand what capacity means, because that directly relates to some of the decisions you may want to make with building changes, whether it's enrollment capping, tenants' area changes. Where specialized program is or should be will have an impact. Right now, what administration has made us aware of is, and we see this with the data as well, is the bulk of the, some of the programming is on the south-side buildings, and some of the students that are attending are clearly in the north, so some of the travel times and logistics of getting those students could be better if the space could be made available further north. Annually reviewing your projections always is a recommendation, just because there are some changes that are happening with some of the demographics, particularly as we start seeing more turnover with some of the housing. But overall, the district is looking to have fewer students as we move forward in five years, and that's a different way of planning than when you were growing and thinking you needed all these new buildings and whatnot. So with that, open up with maybe some other questions board members may have?
I have two questions, I guess. First of all, I was here last time, we did the demographic study, and like you said, the numbers were almost spot-on as far as what you projected. The one area where maybe they weren't as spot-on as we would have liked, but again, this was something that I don't know if it is even possible to project this, but that's the reason I'm asking the question, is because there were a couple neighborhoods, particularly the Brooks attendance area, where we had a lot more people move out, and newer families with younger kids move in that we anticipated, or that even the projections showed. So it was kind of one of those anomalies, I think, that happened. While overall, the numbers were exactly what you projected, and that, there was like a pocket that it was, it was more than we had, I think, initially thought were going to be in that area. Is there a way, I suppose there's not, I mean, you don't know when something like that might happen, right? I mean, I know you tried to do the heat things and projecting out to twenty twenty-one, you know, the density of where you think it might be, but is there any way to tell stuff like that? Because when I was looking at the Frye area, there was a lot more, in my eyes anyway, there was a lot more bigger dots than smaller dots, which meant kids were older. So does bigger dots necessarily mean that they're going to sell, and then new families are going to come in with smaller dots or younger kids? Does that all make sense?
Dot, and big dots are small. Yeah, there's a certain sense of, when we're looking at what's happening in each of these planning areas, and historically, we now have, going back to two thousand three, four, and we can see when these units are coming online, and so the model, the statistical model is trying to forecast that we're going to see some of these anomalies that happen. And for instance, when we looked at what occurred between fifteen sixteen and sixteen seventeen, we saw a lot of places where they maybe had, let's say, thirty kindergartners, and they dropped down where there's only twelve. And so naturally, the model is saying, okay, well, historically, you were averaging, let's say, twenty-five, thirty students, and now it's twelve, what's happening here? And so one of the things when we're looking at re-greening is they, it never happens at a rate that's similar to when those homes were first built. So when we see a lot of these large dots, we know there's going to be some re-greening that happens, but it's not going to happen at a rate that's going to be like these new developments. And so we're trying to matriculate out as we see more of these larger dots, older students that we're potentially positioning for a re-greening in those particular areas. So the model then is saying, okay, over the next five years, which of these subdivisions will we start to see that? And will we more likely see elementary-age students? Will they be replaced by other high school students, middle school? And that's where the market starts to shed some light on that. If it's less affordable homes, how well do people feel about the economy? Because perception becomes the reality in the choices people make where they live in the district.
And then my only other question, this is not something I'm necessarily looking for an answer to, but just that, all the people that are up on the panel are keeping aware of it, I was surprised that I didn't see any yellow, yellow or oranges or even reds in three areas. One being the Atwater at Country Lakes, the, near the new golf course community, I was surprised I didn't see at least a, some more orange there, I guess. Station one and two, I was surprised that there was just yellow and orange. And also, which didn't even make any color, is the Metro fifty-nine. I mean, it wasn't even, which is just south of the train station, north- I mean, it wasn't even, which is just south of the train station, north of Jefferson, which didn't even show up as a blip. And I think there's two thousand apartments that are coming there. So I was surprised that there was nothing on the future projections that came out of those. So I just wanted to bring it up, not that I'm looking for an answer, but as long as you guys are keeping abreast and aware of it, so.
Yeah, and I'll answer those just because if we did a snapshot today of seventeen, eighteen, particularly with the Country Lakes subdivision, you'd see students there. And that was something that with the preliminary data the district sent to us this last week before Labor Day, we, we see kids there. The same thing with Station one and two, we're, we're seeing some changes in the type of students that are there. So they're there, they're in the model looking forward. It's just they're not having, particularly with Metro fifty-nine and Station one and two, a lesser impact than what...
Right, because nothing's happening right now. It's kind of just nothing. But I, but I, but while it's nothing right now, I think it's going to be something real quick. So that's, that's all I was, bring it up, bring it up.
Tiny.
Thanks.
Justin, did you have a question?
As, as we develop this further and with workshops or on your key consideration page, I think it's important that we, as a board and, and administration, add the annually review of the enrollment projections. I know we get the enrollment reports, but I don't think we, we sit down as a board and really go through that to say, where are we at with the projections? Here's the report. Let's take a look at that and consider any changes or impacts that need to be done. So that would be a nice addition. And I think for further consideration, two other items. Jay, we've got decreasing enrollment. And I know you've already plugged in that new funding formula we got. Does the decreasing enrollment have any impact on us financially?
Thank you for, for asking that question. I know a couple of board members were interested in that. And Dr. Lee, myself, and Dr. Sullivan watched a webinar today on the new funding formula. And our decreasing enrollment will impact us in two possible ways. The first is that as our enrollment drops, the formula, it's, it's baked into the formula that we're not going to need all of the resources that we did the previous year because of that loss of students. Couldn't tell you right now what the calculation is and how much we will lose. We will maintain our base funding minimum and what we would lose would be any new money for the next year. The other possible way that the enrollment change could hurt us is if the base funding minimum is met and the next year, the allocation isn't funded by the state of Illinois completely. Then, in the past, we've been used to a proration of a percentage. It would be a proration based on students. So we, all districts would get less if they lost students by that student amount. If that makes sense.
So to drive home the point, ISBA changed its way that it calculates proration?
Yes.
To go from percentage of dollars?
Correct.
Percentage of students?
Correct, per pupil.
Perfect. All right, the second question, if we're done with that. I'm, I'm look, you said we had capacity across the system, but we have areas that are over capacity. So from just a extreme standpoint, I'd be interested to see what happened if we were to smash all of the capacity together. More theoretical than practical and see where we're at with total excess capacity across the buildings. Because I think that'll give us an idea on how we allocate some of this stuff. You know, if we, you know, if we have point five of an elementary school left after we smash all the capacities together, then that might impact our boundaries, that might impact our programming, that might impact what we put in the different buildings. So that'd be something I'd like to see at a workshop or later on.
So instead of different silos, if you will, look at it from a real big macro standpoint? And then, okay, now what do we, if we think there's a problem with that big macro, then how are we going to address it?
A, a, a little bit. I mean, you've got, so we broke down the elementary schools, but like, we, so we have three tiers, right? Elementary, middle and high school. What's, we have our, our, our different schools and we have our different preferences. But we've got our total capacity for high school, total capacity for middle school and elementary school. What happens if we were to roll up all those numbers? What's our percentage capacity across, at elementary across the district? At middle school across the district, high school across the district, based on, you know, our current programming? And that might give us an idea on where we would like for ideal programming or changes in residency or policy stuff. So that's, that's something I'd like to see later.
Maybe, maybe this is, maybe you guys can add that, I don't know whether it would be now or maybe later, but I would think that that was part of what the original plan or thought process had been in order to ask for us to kind of go down this path is to determine overall where we should, where we should wind up or suggestions. Was that the thought process and, or was it more just specific schools?
We've got some capacity issues to deal with, right?
Right, right.
And so that's generally what, what we've, I think was driving it. But then there's other issues to look at. We're talking about, you know, maybe what to do with Wheatland Elementary School. That doesn't fully go into the capacity, but it is. And so, you know, do we need to put students there? Do we need it for student building or, so it, it, it kind of works together.
Other questions, comments?
I just had, I think the most important part of a, is the assumptions. I mean, the data's there, but the assumptions you made. And I'm just wondering, were there assumptions that you weren't used to making with this report? And I did notice, I, I'm pretty sure somewhere in this report, you talked about the millennials purchasing and the way they go about they. So that seems like that would be a new kind of assumption, but I don't see it listed on this one page, page sixteen. So I'm, I'm just wondering about the assumptions you made, how comfortable you are with those, if there's new ones? And if you wanted to add, expand on that a little?
Absolutely. With assumptions, millennials, it's a little bit newer than when we were here five years ago, because now we have five years more of data to see some of their purchasing power and some of the, the hard facts of what it means to be a millennial and coming out of college and the lifestyle choices that they would like to have with where they live. So that's something that's now a little bit newer. We also know that at some point, the baby boomers, they're moving into different seasons of their life where we should start seeing some of this housing product changeover. So, so we know there's going to be some more greening that happens. And some of the assumptions that are put into that for, for that baby boom generation is if you're not on a two-story, you're more likely to stay longer. If you have a two-story home, you're, you more likely will leave, particularly if your bedroom is on the, the second floor. Right? This is the grab, people. Just some of the things that we see.
That wasn't a joke.
But, but I would say all of the assumptions that we made, we feel pretty confident on as, as far as how they relate with the economy. I mean, things that happen that are, you know, with the potential of this next hurricane, well, that's going to have some possibility of, of impacting us here, but we don't really know what that is. And to predict what that potential is, is always a challenge in a forecast.
But I, I personally, I was thinking, you know, as you're going through this, not beforehand, but it is, people are retiring later too, so they are going to tend to stay in their homes where their jobs are, rather than moving. And, and then you've got the millennial shift of their purchasing. So I, you, um, my involvement with this district started with referendum a long time ago. And at that point, there was a study that predicted a downward trend, which turned out to be incorrect. So I guess that's why I feel like these are so important to really think about and consider. But I mean, I, I really feel like you guys have really done a good job of thinking it all the way through and thinking about the different factors.
Lori, did you?
Yeah, I just was noting, you know, it kind of goes back to Justin and the capacity issue. You know, we're, as a whole, undercapacity for elementary and under for middle. But it's interesting that, as Kathy talked about the referendum too, that high school capacity is over. You know, when we're going out for referendum. There's, you know, groups that think that we needed a third high school. This clearly says we did. So again, the accuracy of your reporting was, was very good. We don't seem to be dropping off that until twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, where we can get that back down to, you know, undercapacity for our high schools. So I, I just, again, I think you've done, done great work in the past. And if that's any indication, I think this will be accurate as well. So thank you very much.
Any other final comments, questions? Thank you so much.
Thank you for the large maps, by the way.
Yes.
And if I can leave one parting comment to you guys, when you look at capacity, and this was a conversation we had with all districts, when you see the available space in each of these buildings, don't think that means those spaces aren't being used, that they are. So I want, I want to make that as a comment, because when people start looking at the numbers, they start in their minds saying, oh, we don't need this, this and this. And that's not probably what's happening in those buildings.
No, I understand that. I know there was a conversation when these, you know, we've had these discussions in the past that, you know, even though you have only maybe fifteen students in a, in an art class, you've got fifteen students in a shop class, you're not going to want to combine those because, you know, that makes no sense whatsoever. So understand that there's going to be some variances in that, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Hillman. Anytime.
What are next steps with this? Dr. Sullivan?
Dr. Sullivan?
We have some decisions to make about some buildings. Todd's going to be on me about decisions about Indian Plains. And so, you know, we'll be putting together some recommendations. I think we have to, I think part of the discussion has to be where this fits in with our community engagement piece and how far you want to go. Do you want some interim plans? Because we're looking at a couple elementary schools especially that we need to make some decisions, I think, for the upcoming year. Do we look at some interim plans before we look at anything bigger? If you choose to even look at anything bigger.
Yeah, I know with that October deadline looming, it's already September, so I can't believe that.
And I forgot to mention or, or just comment, but I'm, I'm happy to see the, that they mentioned for the community, the need for us, you know, to continue to ensure we're talking to the community and keeping them abreast, which, which is good since that's right in line with what we've been discussing, so.
But I, I, I think that we're going to be probably making some recommendations to you about at least something interim before we can get through that entire process, so that we can get through the next school year.
Totally understand that makes sense.
Next agenda item, Board of Education update. I know the people who are working on the resolution have some stuff to share. Mr. Carubis, Ms. Beal?
Want to start, Kathy, or me?
We threw out an idea for a memo to maybe get out to some of the other districts, maybe going through the divisions, sending them to the division chairs. So I don't know if you guys have had a chance to look at it. He, he wrote a lot of it and then I tried to make some white space around it.
Did you do it or did one of your kids do it?
I actually did that, yeah.
What do you suggest we do with that? Just, that was my first thought when I looked at it.
When we had our last meeting, we talked about people wanting some talking points. And since we don't, since we're questioning, since we're concerned about our advocacy in getting this passed, it's not a, it's not a hundred percent winner. We're going to have to do some pushing to get it done. We wanted the board to review this memo with the purpose of using it for your own advocacy or using it, spreading it out to the division dinners across the state possibly, or at, at least at the DuPage one. So we start educating other school boards and have an opportunity for some back and forth before we get to the tri-conference with a mass of people. And it's kind of getting our ducks in a row before, before the voting begins. So take a look at the, the memo. If you see any changes, recommendations, additions, deletions, let Kathy or myself know. If you have any, any ideas on how to otherwise utilize it besides on your own in your contacts with other school board members or at the division dinners. But my plan at a minimum is to have something like this at the DuPage Division Dinner. We can get it on all the tables, we could talk about it with the people we know and spread the word early.
Well, now Terry usually gives a, Terry Fielden from two oh three, gives an update. Will he give us a chance to get up and speak just briefly for that as part of the update?
Those agendas for those meetings are pretty strict, so I doubt that. But he might be able to say, there's a flyer on the table, so just ask about it. But yeah, I, we're going to have to ask permission for that and see how that goes. But I don't, you know, we're kind of unusual in trying to be...
Proactive?
Proactive, that's the word I was thinking of, yeah. So I mean, truly, really unusual. Usually it's a couple people talking to each other a week before the conference, so.
I think that's just a good way to utilize some of those meetings.
Well, they're, they're very time-focused, so they don't want anybody, you know, because that's all we get complaints about are how long the meetings are. I don't know anybody who does that.
No, but it was funny, because one of the most beneficial DuPage meetings we had is where we all did the roundtable and the, the idea sharing. And this is exactly what we're trying to do here. But yeah, I know your point, I get your point.
And I think it should be disseminated in some fashion. It's important. Yes.
I think we could just get it out to the division chairs at least, because they're all on the website. They do have a thing about, you know, we just can't, you know...
Solicit?
Solicit to people we don't know. But if, the, the division chairs, I think, would be the best people to send it to.
Because they could be our allies out there or advocates, I should say.
Maybe they can, if we did it quickly, we could get it to a lot of the fall meetings before they, before the conference. I know, I already saw one error and anybody read it and find any other answers?
I'm not used to there being anything in that section.
Oh.
Save us so unusual.
I'm going to try, I did take a look, I'm going to try and take a look. I, it's difficult for me first to have a paragraph-long sentence. I'm going to try and see if we can, if I can suggest some ways.
Any improvements?
I just suggest.
No, any improvements, I'm big.
That's just difficult for me.
You wrote a lot of paragraph nonsense.
It was a resolution.
That's over a hundred and forty characters.
But yeah, one of them's the, the resolution, so it bits, kind of sticks.
So if there's points, you know, that they will, people will bring up to object to this, like, it would be nice to have a counterpoint, you know? We know that these are the things people bring up, that why they are not in favor of this. If we could have a few counterstatements so that we can have points to make back if those come up in a conversation, that would be good.
Counterpoints to what is already written?
It's in there, it's just not as clear, so. So if you read the, you know, the, it's a paragraph that begins, districts may decide to close schools when possible, because you're going to get somebody that says, well, why don't you just close schools? And so you can close schools, however, that negatively, you know, has a, has a negative impact. So it, it's in there. You know, maybe it could be clearer. You know, maybe it can be clear, maybe it could be point-counterpoint thing, so that...
Yeah, you know, if anybody wants to look at it and, like, clean it up a little bit more, that's welcome to it, please. I can send you out the draft version. It's on a publisher, so.
I have some additional things, but I'll just throw them at you guys one, an email.
All right. Anything else? Just very briefly, Kathy and I attended an IASB focus group, in which they asked various districts to give them feedback on the services that they provide. I think major feedback was on their fee structure, was a lot of comments. There was a lot of comments on their level of advocacy, and should they be doing some more? And there was also some comments in terms of their services and how they are advertising them so school districts can participate with IASB better. Anything else with that, Kathy?
No, I think you covered it. It was interesting, it was nice that they're, they said they've done these surveys every 10 years, I think, and sometimes they update them. So this is kind of a new thing that they were doing, is getting a focus group to get some real feedback. And it was very honest conversations that were done, because, yeah, people were very blunt with some of their comments. But I think they appreciated it a lot through the staff.
And we shouldn't anticipate a survey, that's what I think we.
Yeah, yeah, but the timeline on that is pretty vague at this point. They really want to look at everything they get, and they want, they'll be doing some more focus groups, I think an ad hoc kind of focus group at the convention, or the conference, I mean.
The, the next line meeting is September 22nd, so we'll have some feedback from them, I guess, after next, in October. And then finally, I just want to reinforce what Sue said. The in-service orientation first teacher day was very, very, very powerful. There were some great statements made that I think set a tone for the school year. And I hope we continue that tone, and the tone was one of relationships, relationships with our teachers and kids, relationships with each other. There was a tone, Karen quoted Rosa Atkins, who's the superintendent of Charlottesville, that says, "Things that are going to drive her district and hopefully drives ours is I believe love and what is right will prevail." And there were some really very positive core things talked about, you know, that we have to have our relationships with kids, we need to make them safe, and we, if they're going to fail, it's good, but let them fail forward. And I hope we revisit this theme over and over again, because I think it set a very great tone. I can see Paul, we were both blown away by the message. And the culture and climate started for the 2017, 2018 school year, and I hope that continues all year among us and within the district. So it was a job well done by Tom Murray and by all the staff who put on the in-service. So thanks, and let's keep that momentum going. With that, I need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.